Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the June 21st, 2018 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick. Commissioner Wade.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as its own.
Welcome to the Planning Commission. We have a medium agenda tonight, so let's, without further ado, we'll move on to Item 3, Public Statements. We will now receive public statements. This is a time reserved for anyone wishing to address the Commission on a matter that is not on the Consent Calendar, public hearings portion of the agenda. If you are here for Items 5A through 5G, this is not the time to speak. Does anybody in the audience wish to address the Commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no one, we will move on to Consent Calendar, non-public hearing items. These items are typically involved housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any Commissioner wish to remove a Consent Calendar, non-public hearing item for separate Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Item 4A on the Consent Calendar, non-public hearing items?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Consent Calendar, Item 4A, approval of minutes from a June 7 regular meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bell, thank you. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Okay. We will now move on to Consent Calendar, public hearing items. The next Agenda section includes public hearing items that are considered routine or non-controversial. These items have been reviewed by staff and are conditioned in accordance with the requirements of the municipal code. Staff will read each of the items under the Consent Calendar to ensure that the public has the understanding of all items to be considered. If you would like to speak on an item, please come forward after the items are read and ask that the item be removed for discussion. If no items are removed by a member of the public or a Commissioner, the Commission will vote on all items together in one motion without further comment. Staff, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chairman Kater and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight's agenda includes the following projects. Revised Plan Development Review 18-0161, a proposal to approve a revised plan development review to update the site configuration for PDR 15-0133, which allowed a retail center on 9.88 acres in a C2-PCD district located at 6200 Panama Lane. Second, Plan Development Review Number 18-0201, a proposal to approve a new planned unit development to allow 81 multiple-family dwelling units on 5.22 acres in an R3-PUD district located at 3345 Bernard Street. Item Number 3, an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 5517, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project to build 86 single-family homes on 56.04 acres zoned R1 and R1/HD located east of Via Napoli Drive within the Rio Bravo Country Club area in northeast Bakersfield. Item Number 4 is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6426, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project to build 307 single-family homes on 79.86 acres zoned R1 located south of Palladino Drive approximately 660 feet west of Vineland Road in northeast Bakersfield. Item Number 5 is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6759, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project to build 314 single-family homes on 57.04 acres zoned R2 located south of State Route 119 Taft Highway approximately 660 feet east of Ash Road in southwest Bakersfield. Item Number 6 is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 7140, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project to build 117 single-family homes on 28 acres zoned R1 located on the south side of Berkshire Road between Ash Road and Mountain Ridge Drive in southwest Bakersfield. And Item Number 7 is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 7263, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project to build 155 single-family homes on 82 acres zoned R1 and R2 located at the northeast corner of Berkshire Road and Reliance Drive in southwest Bakersfield. This concludes the reading of the items on the Consent Calendar, public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. I will now open, at this time, I will open all of the Consent Calendar, public hearing items. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a Consent Calendar, public hearing Does any Commissioner wish to move a Consent Calendar, public hearing item? Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you. I'd like to have Items 5A and 5B removed from the Consent Calendar.
Any other Commissioners? Seeing no one, at this time, the public hearing on all Consent Calendar items 5C, 5D, 5E, 5F, and 5G are now closed. May I get a motion with Item 5A and 5B moving to public hearings?
I'll make that motion.
You don't technically have to make that motion, but it's fine.
Thank you. May I get a second on the adoption of Items 5C through G?
I'll second.
We actually need the motion on adopting staff's recommendation for 5C through 5G.
That's what I thought we were doing.
Commissioner Kater, I think, asked to move 5A and B to the hearings, which is not what we need.
I think I got a little wordy. All right, let me, let's backtrack a little bit, clean it up. At this point, we'll close the public hearing on, or we'll close Items 5C through 5G. May I get a motion from the Commission to approve Items 5C through 5G, including staff recommendations?
Perfect. I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Lomas. Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. And thank you, Mr. Iger, for clarifying. He's watching us. Moving right along to, oh, madam, to our roll call vote. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Moving on to Item 6, it is now time to hear Consent Calendar, public hearing items moved from that portion of the agenda. Before we begin, I want to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a more exhaustive report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may also be provided to the Clerk, who will provide copies to the Commission. Please be respectful of other participants in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. With that being said, we will be, we will open the public hearing on Item 5A.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call Whitney Jackson, Associate Planner for Site Plan Review, to present a brief staff report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Whitney. And this first slide that you're looking at is an aerial view of the project site. It's located on the northeast corner of Panama Lane and Ash Road. It is a 9.88 acre parcel, as was mentioned before. This shows the general plan land use designation, which is general commercial. And this is the current zoning of the parcel, which is C2-PCD, and that stands for Regional Commercial, Planned Commercial Development Zone District. These are the site plans. The prior one on the left was approved in 2015 by your Board, and the proposed site plan on the right consists of slight building reconfiguration and over 8,000 square feet reduction in building footprint. And then next, we have the elevations for the site, and these are a little different than the prior ones. And if you have any questions, we have the applicant here, and he can answer those for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Public hearing on this item is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Seeing no one, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, Mr. Iger, at this point, do we move on to Commissioner?
Commissioner Questions.
Questions.
Questions first, and then once we're done with questions, we'll close.
We'll move on to discussion.
Yep.
Okay, so this time is, the time is now open for Commissioner Questions. Seeing Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you. I'm looking at the proposed site plan versus the approved site plan, and I'm a little concerned about access in and out. In the first site plan, well, let me first say that I like some of the improvements because it got rid of the loop road behind all the buildings. It gives a little bit more privacy for the residential on that side, but in the first plan, the way it was approved, you could access off Panama Lane and then exit out to Ash. And in this plan, I'm looking down here at the bottom of the new plan, and it shows an entrance, it actually shows two entrances, I believe this is Panama Lane right here. And the second, the one that closest to the corner of Ash, appears to just dead-end into that parking lot. Am I misreading that?
The entrance nearest Ash in Panama?
Yeah, there's like, it looks like a service station there on the corner, then there's a road onto Panama. And I don't know what this whole dotted line is, but it looks like that's a closed-in parking lot. So if you pull in onto Panama, you have to turn around and go back out to Panama after you've visited those two buildings, Building 4 and 5.
Yes, that's correct, from the south.
So there's no way to get through the rest of the parking lot?
No, you can. If you look just east of Building 4, that goes all the way through.
If I may, Ms. Jackson, those dashed black lines indicate accessible crosswalks for pedestrians, so you actually have straight to the north of that westernmost entrance along Panama Lane. You can progress to the main parking lot there in the center.
Yeah, they go through, that's just showing access for pedestrian right of way.
Is there a requirement in this plan for any sound walls between the commercial and the residential?
No, because there aren't any loading docks in the back, but they will have to do an evergreen screen buffer of trees 20 foot on center.
Okay, but there is, on the backside of Building 1, there is parking on that side?
Yes.
Okay. So there'll be a sound wall there?
No, that will most likely be employee parking. We only require 16-foot sound wall if there's a loading dock.
I see.
To where they're going to be bringing in merchandise at whatever hour of the day.
Let me make sure I'm looking at the right plan, I keep going back and forth here. Doesn't that say a loading dock behind Building 1? Or am I misreading that?
There will be, if it's...
It's kind of hard to see on my plan because I just reduced it down, and I'm trying to blow it up to see it. I'm just trying to read the writing on there. I thought it said loading.
No.
Okay.
This is most likely going to be a gym, so I don't think they're going to be really loading anything else.
Yeah, it just says loading on our plan, so.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Are there any other Commissioner questions? Okay, seeing no other questions, I will close the public hearing on this item and return it to Commission for comment and action. Commissioner Comment?
Yeah, just to record, I had some discussion with Mr. Coyle regarding this project earlier in the week, and he allayed most of my concerns. I do have a concern about those, both Building 1 and Building 2 have an area that's referred to as loading, and I just want to be sure that we're doing what we need to do to protect the homeowners on that side of the building. And I don't know if there's anybody here for the project from McIntosh or not?
Good evening. My name is Roger McIntosh with McIntosh and Associates. Those areas are shown as loading, as that is how those buildings will be loaded. They're not necessarily loading docks, so they're not going to bring a semi-trailer in to offload anything in those small retail spaces. Nobody's going to offload anything into the fitness center. Those are simply loading doors where you can come in the back instead of coming through the front. As far as the access on Panama, the reason we have two access points instead of three, when the first site plan was approved, we had the three locations, we had good access off of Panama. Subsequent to that approval, PG&E went out and put a $100,000 power pole right in the middle of one of those driveways. And because of that, we felt it was impossible to move that power pole, so we had to split the access points and reduce them from three to two to meet the city's, try to meet the city's deceleration standards. So those loading areas are loading doors, they're not loading docks.
Thank you. And is that defined in our, I'm sorry, back to, I'm sorry, your name was Melissa? Whitney, I'm sorry. That's defined in our, in our plans? That a loading dock is actually have to have a raised dock? I have no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Seeing no other Commissioner comments, this is a roll call vote.
We need a motion.
Oh, actually, we need a motion, sorry. May I have a motion to adopt staff recommendations, including all comments and...
Since I made a deal out of it, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve Item 5A, the revised plan development of 18-0161.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Bell. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving right along to public hearing on Item 5B. Mr. Coyle, if you would give a staff recommend, or a staff report?
Again, I would like to call Ms. Jackson to the podium, please.
Thank you.
Hi again, Whitney Jackson with Planning. And the site we're looking at here, this is an aerial view of the site located on the south side of Bernard, west of Oswald, and it's near the East Hills Mall. This is the general plan designation, it's high-density residential. And then the current zoning of the site is R3-PUD, which stands for Multiple Family Dwelling Plan Development Unit Zone District. And this is the site plan. It's proposed for an 81-unit apartment complex consisting of 69,000 square feet on 5.22 acres of land, and there are both one and two-story buildings. These are the proposed elevations of the two-story buildings, and the one-story are similar, and I also have print copies for your Board if you would like to see those. And this zoning allows multiple family dwellings and apartments by right, that's the R3, and the PUD, the Planned Unit Development Overlay, allows multiple family dwellings and condominiums, and it ensures the uniqueness of project design is preserved. Please note that there was not a PUD overlay, staff would just do this as an approval through site plan review, and it wouldn't need to go through your Board's approval. So this isn't a time to be used to restrict residential development, because it is allowed in this zone. So the PUD is just to ensure the uniqueness of the site. And if you have questions, I have the applicant and the architect here, and staff, we can answer questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. The public hearing on this item is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the project? So please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Pelz. I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Authority, County of Kern. So Honorable Chair and Commissioners, we actually have an agreement with Central California Conference of Seventh-day Adventists to potentially develop this site. And our proposal, as Whitney indicated, is for 81 units, and those units will be targeted towards veterans that earn 60% of very median income or less. We've laid out the site in a way that has quite a bit less density than allow, or about half of the density level that's allowed on the site. And we tried to orient the buildings towards the center of the site, so they're not right adjacent to surrounding uses, and then use extensive landscaping to screen out adjacent uses, whether it's a school or the condos to the west or the homes to the south. This development, if we were able to achieve funding and actually develop it, will have a 55-year extended use agreement on it that requires it, that it be maintained as affordable housing. It will have an investor, that's typically a large bank, like a US Bank or PNC, that actually goes out annually to inspect the property to make sure it's being maintained properly. The Housing Authority would manage it, but we would have quite a bit of oversight. We'd also have oversight on a periodic basis from the state, who is expected that would be providing some of the funding to make sure we're complying with those requirements, including the quality of the housing and maintenance of the property, et cetera. So we're pleased to be able to provide this opportunity. There's a great need for affordable housing in our community. The city's currently not meeting its standards, or state standards, for affordable housing production. We feel like this is a great site. It's an area of opportunity, we consider it, where it's close to job opportunities across the street, great access to transit and other amenities, a school nearby, et cetera. So we're welcome, any questions you may have about it.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one, we will move on to anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the project. If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing no opposition, Mr. Iger, do we move on to Commissioner Questions?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, any Commissioner wishing to ask questions of the applicant or staff? Seeing no one, we'll move on to Commissioner Comments and Action.
You want to close the hearing first?
Oh, now is, we will first close the hearing and then move on to Commissioner Comments and Action.
I'm having trouble with my buttons.
Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you.
Yes.
The reason I asked the item to be pulled off the Consent Calendar was in the staff recommendations, there was no mention of the current Housing Authority being involved in this project. And I wanted to hear from Stephen, Mr. Pelz, regarding that. I appreciate that, that makes this project a lot better in my mind, that the current Housing Authority is involved in it, because whenever you get into these low-income housing, it's very easy for them to become dilapidated and in disarray. And with the current Housing Authority involved in it, I'm reassured that that won't be the case on these, this project. I was also concerned about the sunset date, because I know that in some markets, you know, where the real estate prices get going, that developers try to convert these low-income housing projects into something, something else. And so, thank you for sharing the time horizon on that, and thank you for your involvement in the project. I think that we need, we certainly need low-income housing everywhere in Bakersfield, but we don't always build it where the low-income people might be. So it's good to see this project in an area that definitely needs it, so that's all my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Are there any other Commissioners wishing to speak? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to adopt staff recommendation on Item 5B.
I make a motion to adopt 5B.
Thank you, Commissioner Bell. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Lomas. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Moving right along to Item 7, Communications. Staff, do we have any communications tonight?
Yes, we have a few brief announcements, and in the interest of time, I'll keep my comments brief. One is, there will not be a Planning Commission meeting on July 5, the day after Independence Day. So as planners, I hope you will take advantage of the time to plan for your holiday that week. We will have a meeting on July 19, and there are at least three projects on... We will have a meeting on July 19th, and there are at least three projects on the agenda thus far, but probably more to come by, by the 19th. My, my second comment is, the Planning Commission should have received some communication inviting you to contact staff, both within the Planning Division as well as other departments in, in city government. So I would like to reiterate, please feel free to either call staff members directly or to contact me. And as I spoke with Commissioner Coleman earlier this week, if, if the Planning Commission asks me a question that I don't have at the, at the Planning Commission meeting, I will let you know that I don't have the answer, but that I will get the answer to you by noon the next day, provided that the people who do have the answers are, are in the office. And then lastly, I would just like to share with you that on June 7th, you met Steve Esselman, who is a principal planner in the advanced planning section. Tonight, we had Whitney Jackson give a presentation. The Planning Commission, as well as the City of Bakersfield, is well-served by a very small but efficient and highly productive staff. And I'd like to share with you a list of all of the Planning Division responsibilities, because it would take me a while to go through the list and let you know all of the various issues that we deal with in the Planning Division. And that may help you if you need to ask any of us any questions to target the particular section within the division that could address those questions. So this was my debut in, in the hot seat. I would like to thank the commission for your patience and your understanding, and, and thank you very much for what has, has been a rather pleasant experience.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Moving on to Commissioner Comments? Mr. Coleman?
Thank you. Mr. Coyle, thank you very much for your cooperation this week on these. Is there a way that we can know who specifically to call on these projects? Am I missing that? Like, should we be calling the, the person who wrote the staff report, or who should we be contacting in your absence, or if I don't, if I don't feel like it's something I should bother you with? Is there somebody, like, are these labeled, or how are they?
Well, one, it's never a bother. I consider that to be part of my job to respond to Planning Commission inquiries. Secondly, if you look at the, at the staff reports, as I, as I showed you before the meeting, there's an attachment that usually has conditions of approval, and the staff person from each department who prepared those conditions for approval, their contact information will be there. So you can, you can reach out to them directly, or again, you can contact me, and I will track down the answer for you.
Thank you. And one last item. Ms. Jackson, I apologize for butchering your name, so I'll remember it now.
Great. Closing out Commissioner Comments, I just wanted to extend welcome to Kevin Coyle. Thank you for taking part, and thank you for providing the directory. It's very helpful to kind of get a sense of who's doing what at the city and giving us a, kind of a cheat sheet, so we don't have to always call you to, to be... Commissioner Lomas did not receive it as well, so if we...
I, I have extra copies, hard copies, plus I can send you the information by email, so you'll have it electronically as well.
Thank you. And again, welcome, and thank you. So closing out Commissioner Comments, I move to adjourn this meeting at 6:04. Thank you. No, no vote.